Welcome to the Town of Kirkland Lake Finance Meeting, April the 3rd, 2018. Approval of the agenda?
It's moved by Counselor Morgan, seconded by Counselor Barker. The council approves the agenda for its finance meeting of April 3rd, 2018 as presented.
All in favor? Unanimous. Any declaration of pecuniary interest? None declared. Petitions and delegations? None. Reports of municipal officers and communications? Acting CAO, Wolf Haas.
If you don't mind, I'd like to take this seat so that we can offer the other seat up to the program managers. We apologize for being late in bringing the user fees forward. The original intention was to have them combined with the operating capital budget to have a complete financial picture. Unfortunately, we've been overwhelmed by other considerations, and so we are going back and we're trying to do everything in a piecemeal, but more accurate fashion. First thing that we are bringing forward is the user fees. In general, I think that you'll find that the 2018 user fees are reasonable, affordable, and practical. We recognize that we have to balance the user-pay principle. We have to balance removing the stress from the ratepayer, but we have to balance that against the desirability of different services that the corporation renders. Sometimes the service is necessary, and it can't be borne just by a user. Sometimes it's something that makes a community worth living in, and it is something that we bring forward as well as we can on a user basis, but it is something that the municipality as a whole supports. Most of the comments that we would normally receive are, "Well, you don't listen to anybody, just do whatever you want." No, that's not true. We've had a number of public meetings, and the user fees this year, I think, do reflect the input from the public at previous open houses. Sometimes where the service befits, benefits a few, that is reflected in the user fees. You'll see that with the airport. Now, with the airport presentation, it is exactly what was asked for. How can you make it as user-based as possible? The manager will be speaking to that and providing indications as to how they can be dealt with. Other times, we also reflect changes in the economy. Okay, we are in a bit of a boom cycle. Our building department is much busier. Well, we're picking up on the user fees to reflect that. We also try to reflect what the rules are and what the comparisons are within the region. We can't be exactly the same as every other community because we're Kirkland Lake. We're not the same as every other community, but we do try to stay within the same band. We do reflect where necessary, the higher costs of doing business. So you'll see that at the complex. You have your utilities, you have everything else going in there, but mostly it's when you start talking about additional staff time that is required to make sure an event or an activity does proceed safely and conveniently. So that's reflected in there. There are new items as we pass through this user fee discussion, but we do have the pool coming online. There is civic with the fees that were discussed with council prior to that. But overall, I think that you will find that the staff have done an excellent job in putting together a package that represents a good balance and hopefully a strong foundation going forward. I'm going to ask individual members of the staff to speak to their particular areas. I don't want to drag this out too long. I want to be as appropriate to council and to the public as we can, so we'll focus on where you have questions. So the first one, administration and town hall, animal control. Joanne can speak to that better than anybody else can.
So administration is basically really everything that's regulated. We do have very little discretion that we can charge here. Certified copies and commissioners' oath. I'm suggesting that they go up by $5. Burial permits to remain the same. The commercial business licenses, $5,000 for first-time user and $1,000 for every year after that. Bingo to remain the same. And marriage will also stay the same. We do not receive the fees for that, so the commissioners are fine with, as it stands. Any questions on administration?
Just a quick question. The burial permits, how come they're not included with the cemetery budget?
Because that's administration. So what we do is we do the registration of each burial so that it does go through.
That's something that happens at town halls?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I wasn't aware of it.
That's a clerk's job. Treasury, I don't have...
Yeah, I have not received a very good update on treasury, but I don't think that... Let me just find my pages again. Thank you. Again, we're seeing the same from, what I recall from Hosea. We're seeing the same increases and where necessary to reflect higher costs, but generally they are still seeing the same. So I'm not seeing a big difference here. Is there any particular questions on that one? I may have to get back to you because Hosea is off today.
Next page is animal control. Animal control, we do not receive the revenues from this. I did talk with our contractor, and our contractor is quite happy leaving everything the way it is. Again, from last meeting, our animal control contract is up for debate. That is going to be discussed as part of the entire budget process. She does receive the way that it is set right now. She gets $45,000 a year, covers all of her own expenses. So all of these fines and all the revenue that she gets in here is also to help cover the cost of feeding the animals, her car, gas, insurance, that kind of thing. Any questions on animal control?
Just a comment, Joanne. I know in most communities, it came out not too long ago anyway, about maybe we should be making money off of animal control. Most of the communities that I've lived in, all 14 of them, we calculate the fees to cover our own expenses, but the animal control officer gets most of the revenue, and it's not a get-rich-quick scheme, that's for sure. We certainly have very good coverage by our present animal control officer, and we're thankful, because before, a few years back when we didn't have anybody, there was dogs, cats running the street. So certainly, since we have taken this move, it has eliminated most of the problems.
I think to the benefit of Tracy, she, and the benefit to the town, is that she's working hand-in-hand with advocates for northern animals, and so an awful lot of what they do is when they do catch animals, and instead of euthanizing them, they do get them spayed, neutered, and then they take them away, and most of that expense is covered by advocates. And that is a benefit to us.
Chair? I was just wondering, like, why are we running up to 2020? Like, did I miss something?
Actually, that was from the previous CAO. He wanted to have a long-term projection. We kept it in there because that had been shared amongst the staff. It is an indication. It's not based, not written in stone. We will adjust that as we go forward.
If we're approving, we're approving for the year?
You're only approving for 2018.
Yep.
Okay. If we're okay? Ashley, can you come up for Eric?
I have Rick with me as well, just so he can give some insight to the history if there's any questions. Looks like you got me for the next three. Okay, so for the airport, Wolf sort of alluded that, based on the public meetings that we had in regards to the airport, there was some communication that happened with the public that they would like to see this become more of a user-pay type service versus being tax subsidized. So the fees that are in front of you today, I'll put them up for you. They're not necessarily my recommended approach, but there were things I did want to bring forward for council to consider. One of the biggest changes is the landing fee for the 2,001 kilograms and over. So that's a change from $40 to $100. Basically, that's affecting our charter flights that come to the airport. In terms of comparison to other municipalities in and around Kirkland Lake, they typically range from about $30 to $45. So $100 is obviously significantly higher than that. And that's why I'm saying that $100 may not be the right way to go, but if we are looking to get our money based on the users that are utilizing that airport, that's why I had thrown in that $100. From a helicopter standpoint, we're in the ballpark range. $60 is at the high end in comparison to other municipalities. It's typically around the $30 to $45 range again. Other things that we did was the removal of the free landings when fueling for planes under 2,000 kilograms. We modified the callouts. We increased those to reflect more accurate cost recovery. And the other thing that we actually implemented, or we thought about presenting to council, was actually establishing a daily rate for special occasions, which will prevent us from having to come to council for consideration of what that rate should be every time we have somebody who wants to rent out that space. The price of $1,000 actually came from my quick review of other departments' user fees. So in comparison, at the complex, there's currently a $1,700 charge for out-of-town users for the arena and an $867 charge for in-town or pubs. So I sort of went ballpark in the middle of that and put $1,000. It's no way set in stone. It was just a way to avoid us having to come to council to set a rate every time we have somebody coming forward to use the airport. We are recommending that air ambulance remain the same at 300, and that's consistent with other surrounding neighborhoods, or sorry, neighboring municipalities as well. Anything higher than that, we would become the highest cost in the province for air ambulance landings. Are there any questions for airports?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, Ashley. The increase for the charter flights, I'm not comfortable with that. I think that's excessive. The charter flights, it's important that we put out the welcome mat for our charter flights. That's my opinion. If these people start to fly into Rouen or to Earlton, a lot of the spin-off benefit is going to start to flow to those other communities and not to Kirkland Lake, especially if these are frequent flyers, which I know that some of them are now. So even the $100 from 40 this year, I think, is too much, and certainly to crank it up to 250 in 2020 is grossly excessive. On the lighter planes, to me, that is way too low. To go from 16 to 20, I mean, it's only my personal opinion, but I don't think that those people necessarily need that break, and I think that fee should be closer to the higher charter flight fee, because it's all the same to us whether those people, you know, whether it's a small plane landing or a big plane. I mean, sure, there's a slight difference in the, I guess, the impact on the runway, but it still takes the same amount of work on our part to make sure that those planes land safely. The helicopter thing, I think we have to be careful there as far as pricing ourselves out of the marketplace, because the helicopters primarily, and I'm guessing here, but I think this is primarily the ministry, and it's very easily for them to pick a different airport to land. I mean, that's, again, that's your decision as far as whether you think that's worth it or not, or whether we benefit at all from those flights, but I suspect that those flights come with fuel, and that's, you know, potentially a big one. Parking fees versus hangar fees, I know there's been some discussion about this over the years, and the hangar fees, I think, definitely need to go up, and the parking fees, you know, can stay, I guess, where they are, but if people want to park in the hangar, then they should have to pay for that privilege, otherwise they can park it outside. And finally, on the special occasion permit, and, you know, I know exactly what you're trying to accomplish here, and I appreciate that, but there really is only one user group that that's affecting, and, you know, to avoid coming to council, I don't think we're accomplishing that, because I think a $1,000 fee for the drag races would make them come to council every single year for a fee break. So I think that's, maybe we could cut that in half, but that's just, again, my opinion. I think they bring a fair amount of business to the community, and I would hate to be seen as discouraging that activity. So those are just my comments.
Yeah. The one that I see that probably could go up a small touch would be the aviation fuel. I don't know, I would rather see that go up two or three cents a liter. And certainly, the 2,001 kg and over landing fees to go from 40 to 100, I think is sending a message out to the people that we've been trying to get to settle in Kirkland Lake, that, okay, now you're here, and now we're going to gouge you, you know? There's an old saying I heard a long time ago, and that's, pigs get fed, but hogs get slaughtered. And I think 100 is embarrassing, and it looks like we're just trying to take advantage of the mind, FedEx, the artisan. So I would hope that we would bring that down reasonably to what would be an average in the other communities. One thing I do notice at the airport is there's no hangar door, I don't think. I don't know if that's... So if you're inside or you're outside, that would be the only question, you know? But other than that, I'm fine.
Well, I just want to say that we appreciate the way council is looking at this, because as staff, we felt the same way. We had an open house. We tried to build a user fee structure that reflects what we heard, but at the same time, we have to be cognizant of the fact that we could be harming ourselves. So these were put forward, and we will adjust them as directed by council to be much more fair and in line with what the community needs.
Todd?
I just wanted to comment further on the hangar. I think that's the argument that's been put out there by the people who use it, that there's no door and the fee should be reduced. The reality is, is that most of them do take advantage of parking their planes inside the hangar, because it does keep the weather off primarily and keeps the sun off, and all of those things deteriorate your plane over time. And, I mean, if they don't want to park in there, then by all means, there's lots of room outside to park. So it seems to be, you know, I mean, there's a cost involved in that, whether there's a door on it or not, and I think they should be paying for the privilege.
Okay, Wolf. Or, sorry.
Are we good for airport? I'll move on to which one's next cemetery, I think. So the cemetery is actually pretty simple. We did do some significant increases last year and the year prior. So at this one, or this time, we were only proposing to see a 3% increase in the fees from 2017 to 2018, and it's mostly because we did see those increases in the last couple years. So any questions on that one? You're really going to let Rick get off the hook? Okay, I'll get Vic to come up and help me with the building.
You're all in time.
Yep. Okay. So from a building perspective, assuming he needs a little bit, so we've always withheld the attitude of reducing costs of construction to encourage development. KPMG report did recommend that the building department operate at a full cost recovery. Our revenues are strongly based on construction values and fluctuate significantly from year to year. If more construction occurs, then we are able to recover more of our costs. I do recommend, though, in order to stay competitive with surrounding municipalities, increasing these too much would be detrimental to development in Kirkland Lake. So with that said, we've only proposed a slightly more than 3% increase to try and bring us closer to cost recovery, but obviously not fulfilling that requirement completely. At the proposed rate structure, we are comparable to Timmins and Timiskin Shores, slightly higher than other areas specifically, and our first unit fees and attached garage permit fees. Anything you want to elaborate on, Vic? Are you...
No, most of the costs are just the minimal costs that we already have done over the years, but some of the costs were so low, we just brought them up to reflect real values of what's kind of what it costs to do an inspection and process the administrative costs for the fees.
I just want to compliment you on your, the approach and the philosophy behind this. I think it's a very valuable philosophy to use with our boom we're going through and for future buildings, so fully support it, and thank you.
You're welcome.
Just one question on the fee if construction has started prior to the permit being issued. Are we able to issue many of these, or should we be maybe making this triple or quadruple? Because I know in the past, it's been a problem. I don't know if it's coming under control or not.
There has been a couple of cases where we have used the double permit fees when construction has occurred prior to the issue of sub- a permit. Those have only happened with homeowners. The construction people or the contractors don't necessarily abuse that. They pretty well know, but the homeowners don't necessarily know all of the rules, and when we go there, they come into the office and we straighten it out.
Okay. I'm going to leave you for a bit, and I'll come back.
Thank you.
For the complex, as I said, Bonnie's off on bereavement leave, so she's asked me to speak to it. It will be interesting to speak to it. I don't know how they keep all this straight. Okay. In general, user fees are up a little bit at basically reflecting the higher operating costs, utilities, and staffing. They are in line with other regional centers. There's no difference there. I'm sometimes asked, well, you know, what about private businesses? It's a totally different model. We're certainly not in any desire to be competing with the private sector, but we do have to render a service as well, and the pricing is designed to reflect that, to make it accessible to the community. Fee proposal either has stayed the same or has been increased by 1 to 2, 3%, roughly, depending on what the rates are. Day rates, they round them up and they keep them down, so you'll see some adjustments in that. Students are usually treated as typically 25% less than adults. We do have new fees in there with the pool. If you can find it, I can talk to it. Now, those fees do reflect what we saw in the past with user fees for the old pool area, as well as similar costs to communities that operate a pool that's similar to the newer one. The pool rates will cover the cost of increased staff, and both pools and the slide are functioning. So we're trying to keep the costs under control, but be reflective of what we need for health and safety and for community convenience. Civic fees are also in there. Now, these were based on previous discussions with council and user input. They're designed to help offset the operating costs, but also to encourage use of the facility. These were brought to council at the end of last summer. Point of note that she asked me to say, all food market fees were discussed with the user groups and vendors and are reflected in the pricing that you see there. Ice time is one of the issues that we would like to bring to council's attention. Dead ice time. Can you see it up there? Yeah. Okay. There was a discussion with council before, and council had directed that the dead ice time be dropped to 50%. The idea was that we would encourage more people to come out and use the ice, the arena at that time. The thought process was with the school nearby and the other schools, that would be great. We haven't seen that. Schools are not using it anymore. The other user groups are not using it anymore. The only ones that really used it, according to what I see here, were the gold miners, and that's a bit of a special case because they were making representations directly to council. What we're recommending is that we go back to a 25% discount for dead ice time. That's in keeping with what other facilities in the north are charging, and if others, a particular user group wishes to have a different arrangement, they can make that discussion with council separately. Now, if it is something that we look at, I'm thinking specifically of the gold miners, well, let them come forward, let them put a case together, and let's take a look perhaps at a tenancy agreement that spells out everything that they get, as opposed to playing havoc with the user fees. Very little else to really say. Storage rooms, that's at a premium, so they have increased the square footage rate. Sports tourism, it's not reflected in user fees, because those are appeals directly to council that are then adjusted. Other points, seniors are qualified as 65 and above. Staff costs that are reflected in user fees, they include the benefits, they're all charged back to the user fees. If additional costs are born, then that is also reflected in the fees that people are charged. I'm sorry, I went through it as the Reader's Digest version, but that's all I can really say.
Yeah, well, there was a request from, I believe it was Kirkland Lake District Hospital, for corporate rates or group rates. I don't know if we ever did get back to them, or if there was any discussion that came back to council. It is controversial, because our regular citizens are paying the full rate, and it'd be hard to justify it unless it was one heck of a big group. Do you care to comment on that at all?
I think there's that, that the citizens are paying the rate. There's also, as was pointed out by the mayor, you do have circumstances where the person who would be getting the discount actually lives outside of town, or is in a similar capacity, say, at the dental clinic, and is wondering why they don't get that deal. I'm just going to put this out there, we can explore it further, but if an employer wants to have something special for their employees, is it wrong that they come forward, buy the packages, and then sell them to their employees at a discount, as opposed to the ratepayers paying for it? I'd like to put that forward.
I think that's a very viable option compared to discounting the pricing. Well, so I don't know if there's any flavor to get into group rates or corporate rates at this time.
And this would allow us then to deal with our user fees as they are, no special deals.
Okay, thank you.
Wolf, in the past, we used to get a sort of statistical number as to what was the recovery in terms of percentage. Do you know that for last year?
No, I'm sorry, I don't have that. My understanding that we average around 40%.
40, so...
But that, I can't write that in stone.
And then these prices are not GST included, right?
No, I believe that GST and all user fees are added on afterwards.
Afterwards, so there would be a 13%.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
If we're okay with that, then can we call up... If we're okay with that, then can we call up Rob for the fire services?
Okay, I looked at other fire departments in the area. And for the first five items, we were either the same or already above what they were. So I've, where we were lower was we're second, third and fourth alarms. So I went and raised all of those. And we also do fill scuba cylinders and SCBA cylinders for people, which wasn't in here before, so I added that. And I added the motor vehicle response for provincial highways because that wasn't in there before either.
That's it?
Rob, I'm just wondering, the motor vehicle response, so I don't know what that means, I'm sorry.
Like if there was an accident on the highway and we responded, that's the rate we would charge.
So who would we charge it to, the ministry or are the?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
That was it. He's a man of few words and you never know when he stops talking. Okay, Drew, can we come up to Heritage North? Actually, Caitlin, can you come up as well? And then we can cover both at the same time, they're very similar.
Okay. So I raised the prices of all the rooms by about 2% just to recover some of the hydro and heating costs that have gone up. It's all within most of the buildings in town that are rented for similar purposes. I didn't want to gouge our repeat renters. We have a lot of people that use us quite frequently and I want to keep them coming back. So to raise it any more than that would be tough on them, I think, and then they might start using other areas. Some of the equipment costs have gone up a little bit and that's mostly because things like cleaning chair covers has gone up a lot and we were sort of losing money on that. So now we're back to making a small profit or breaking even on those. We removed the after hours from the midnight fee because we accommodate that by charging them $45 an hour or more if they go over their 10-hour usage on the room. So that's accounted for. And the new prices are the bar prices I put in. That's kept in line with other bars in the area, what they charge for alcohol. So, any questions?
Drew, just, just to clarify, like some of our facilities here are unique in the community. And obviously, we're not competing against anybody necessarily. When you say competing, you mean like these people would potentially go out of town?
They could go out of town, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to clarify that because I think, I think the taxpayers probably would need to know that as far as, okay.
Trying not to compete with, yeah, absolutely.
Norm?
Drew, a few years back, when we started this new venture with Hockey Heritage, we were sort of aiming for a break even point. Are we there?
No. And I, with the, with the cost of overhead and everything, I doubt we could ever get there, but we're doing a lot better.
Give me a number.
Last year, our rentals went up a double from the year before. So we're 150,000, maybe.
So like in recreation, we always shoot for 50%.
For 50%, yeah.
So Hockey Heritage would be at?
It'd be, yeah, 40 to 50% is, is the goal, probably, to recover from rentals, yeah. With the new licensing, I think, now that I see that in play, I think that's going to help us a lot in making some of that money back.
Yeah, Drew, just in regards to the licensing, how long have we had that license, the LCBO license?
Just the end of July, but we ran a couple of Christmas parties and those went really well. And we just did the chamber dinner this past week and that went exceptionally well. So I, I forecast that if we get a lot of weddings in the summer using our bar, we should see an increase in profits.
So it's definitely gonna?
I think so, yeah, absolutely.
Judging by the?
Yeah, by, by the response and by, when people talk to me about renting and knowing that we have the license on site, it seems to have really piqued the interest of other groups that hadn't used us in the past.
Just, Drew, about the catering side of things, are we still okay? Like are we still getting local?
Yes, yeah.
Catering.
Yeah, a lot of people are using in-town all the time. I've seen a couple of out-of-town people use, but for the most part, it's in-town.
Okay. I, I think that Councilor Minow raised a couple of important points. One is that when we look at cost recovery, unlike the complex where you go and that's where you want to do that, really if you're pushed, you can go to any empty hall and have your event. Are you willing to pay for a better setting? It's much more of a value judgment and it's difficult to overcome, though I think that in the last two years, we have made quite a, quite an impact on the local population to convince that we can deliver a quality product at a reasonable price. In terms of the alcohol, it is something that needs to grow, that we need to grow into. And it does affect our staffing and that. And those are other cost enters that we will watch and have to report back to council because that's something that we do, we need to make sure you know.
I think, Will, like I mentioned this once to you before, we've spent a lot of money on the facility, a lot of it was grant money and hired Drew and staff. We must be getting awfully close now to, at least at that recovery stage, that we're offsetting those increased costs.
I think that we are. The limit is really on the nature of the beast itself. You have a facility that in most places would be found in a community that has 50, a population of 50,000, and that's how you would capture your money back. We have 8,000. So we do a pretty good job, and I joke about it, but it's actually true. We get them when they're born for their baby shower. We get them when they have their confirmation, their high school graduation, the first wedding, hopefully not a divorce, but maybe a second wedding and then at the funeral. We really try to track the entire life cycle out. And we're getting better at it. What we need to start focusing on is probably in terms of cost savings as opposed to trying to generate, simply generate more money. So this year, we're already working with more part-timers or in incident, situations like this where the facility is running at night when staff are normally gone. Well, that's fine, other staff are taking the queue to clean up or to pack up and that. But these are all small measures, but they will, they will make an impact. We did see a really good kickoff here in 2014, 2013, 2014. We saw it dip down a little bit and now we've seen it come back up. And mostly that is back to business rentals. Those are the ones that we really need to keep. And in that regard, Heritage North is similar to an airport. It's an amenity, a service that supports the other businesses. But by itself, not as good an argument. Sorry.
That's it? Thanks, Drew. Anne, sorry.
So for the museum, we have very similar to Drew in the sense that we raised our rental rates from 1.5 to 2% for rooms, which varies maybe $5 to $10 per, increase per space. We increased quite a few small areas such as admissions and in some research capacities. But a lot of our fees that aren't as commonly used were left kind of status quo compared to last year's pricing. And then we also have a few new rates based on public usage and requests from the public. So for example, we've had interest for this year specifically going forward as well to have a full building use. So we included a full building rental for half-day, full-day as well as workshop rentals, which strictly, well, does not strictly, but has been requested specifically via art community. And then also with regards to table and chair rentals, in the past few years, we've had a lot of off-site usage of our materials and had no fee set in place. So a lot of the times, it was on a donation basis, but we'd like to have a set fee going forward just to make it more consistent.
That's it? Okay.
Anne, back. So for planning, we're looking at a slightly higher than 3% increase for the majority of its rates. Our user fees are comparable to Timmins and slightly higher than those found in Timisking Shores. We did see a significant jump in our site plan control agreements and deeming bylaw applications. The only reason for that is we are now including the registration of those documents on title. So instead of, there's sort of like an administrative challenge with having these documents registered by the applicant and then it not coming back to us. And sometimes we're having to bug two, three times to, to get the registered documents back and the transfer documents implying that it actually happened. This is just going to let us go through council, pass it to a lawyer, have them registered on title, and then we provide the registered documents back to the applicant. So smoother from an administrative standpoint, cheaper because we're using all the same lawyer, so they're giving us a reduced price. But the fees are going to go up because there's no longer that, that need to go to a lawyer to have it registered on the applicant's side. So there should be some cost savings there for the applicant itself. I've added a couple extra fees in here. The parkland dedication, payment in lieu for residential and other. So the Planning Act, when you do a consent to sever application, which is when you're creating a new lot, typically when you create a new lot, you're supposed to take 5% of the assessed value of that lot and put it in a reserve fund for parkland. So that would actually get transferred over to either park maintenance or the development of a new park. I think we did create that reserve last year, but we didn't have that, that user fee there very visible. So I just wanted to put it in our user fees to make sure that people were aware of it. Consent agreements, this is something that doesn't happen very often, but there is the odd case where it does occur. When you do a consent to sever, typically there's conditions applied to the consent that you need to fulfill within a two-year timeframe. The consent agreement could be added as a condition of the consent and elongate that to your timeframe further. So when the transfer does occur, that consent agreement will run on title with the land and be sure that the, those conditions that would have implied as part of the consent, I'm probably losing you all. But yeah, it just goes with the conditions the committee of adjustment would likely apply and it runs longer than the two years, so the consent won't lapse and have to restart the program over again. The other thing I modified, we originally had peer review documents submitted for the official plan amendment. So this is something that, the perfect example is what we did with Kale Gold's application for rezoning and official plan amendments for the shaft. They did an environmental review. We had that review peer reviewed because we, we had it in our user fees to be cost recovery. I just wanted it to be clear that it, we, we could use this process for any Planning Act process, not just official plan amendments. I didn't want to get into any issues later down the road. If we wanted to do a peer review for a minor variance, for example, we'd have the ability to use that cost recovery method. Again, deeming bylaws, registration on title is included in there, so you see that big jump from 280 to 800. Is there any questions with that? Pretty straightforward.
Just, um, two things. With the cost recovery, with the peer review, Ashley, and I guess maybe this question is better for Will. It's fine to have cost recovery, and I understand we don't want to gouge anybody, but do we have administration costs to deal with that, working its way through our system? Like should it be cost recovery plus 5%? Or, you know, is that, is that reasonable? I'm just throwing it out there because is it true cost recovery or should we be plus a little bit? We've had this argument in the past, Ashley and I, and every time she's dealing with somebody for a peer review, there's an hour or two where she's not listening to me babbling about something else. That is a cost. I would like to see it increased. She knows better based on what, you know, her colleagues in the field and that. But from a municipal point of view, it's the same as when Joanne deals with somebody. There's a cost in there somewhere. Right. I, I would like to see that. I won't, I'll leave it up to Ashley, but I think maybe 5% is a little high, but somewhere in there, definitely. Okay. And, and the only other question I have, Ashley, is for encroachments and leases, the application fee has gone down and I'm just wondering if you can speak to that.
Application fees, 257 to 264?
264 to 200 is what I'm showing.
Oh my gosh. What did I do? That must be a typo. Yeah, it should, it should still be the 264, yeah, that's not right. Thank you for bringing that to my attention. It should state that two, it's probably the 3% on the 264 is what I recommended. I have 350 for the, hmm, okay, I'll look into that one.
Okay, I think the event of the evening, waste management?
My favorite subject. So in terms of, I'll get Rick to come back up because he's my main guy on this one. From a waste perspective, we didn't really change much. We, we are seeing a increase of 3% in the user fees with the exception of some of the items that are available to purchase. These items are partially funded and must remain at that same rate. It kind of messes with our funding if we don't. This is not really laid out nicely, so it's hard to see the numbers. The Waste Management Agreement, the section four in this was actually done last year. We haven't modified it. This was with the intentions of additional garbage being picked up. It was prices that were put forward then. We have not implemented that and it's not implemented as of right now. We just threw it in in case it was going to be implemented. So I'm not sure if you'd like to just keep it there or if we should just remove it until we propose the potential of introducing that when we do the new contract.
I think it's better that you have, you're prepared for it.
Put it there, okay. Anybody can add? Any questions on this one?
That was painless.
Perfect, thank you.
I can just summarize then. We will be going back and dealing with changes at the airport and bringing them back to you. At planning, we have a couple of small errors to correct, the cost recovery as well as the error with the, I, I didn't write down the line item, but Ashley has it. These are the ones that I pulled out of the discussion tonight. Is there anything else you need us to bring back? No, no. Okay, we'll get on that and we'll have it ready for you.
Okay, no additional information or questions?
Smued by Counselor Barker, seconded by Counselor Morgan. The council directs the CAO to bring, to bring back a bylaw passing the 2018 user fees to the regular meeting of April 17th, 2018, taking into consideration amendments discussed in the airport and planning fees.
Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous?
Smued by Counselor Morgan, seconded by Counselor Barker. The council adjourns this finance meeting of April 3rd, 2018 to a regular meeting of council.
We'll have a short recess and then go into our regular meeting of council. Thank you.
Okay, good afternoon and welcome to the Corporation of the Town of Kirkland Lake Meeting of Council held April 3rd, 2018. Before we start our meeting, I have a notice to read. At its meeting of April the 17th, council will consider a bylaw to, number one, set the 2018 user fees, and number two, consider the sale of- to, number one, set the 2018 user fees and, number two, consider the sale of eight and 10 Calbeck Avenue. So we'll start this meeting with a moment of silence, please. Thank you. We have the approval of the agenda.
It's moved by Counselor Morgan, seconded by Counselor Kylie. The council approves the agenda for its regular meeting of April 3rd, 2018 as presented.
All in favor? It's Carrie, thank you. Is there any declaration of pecuniary interest? None declared. Petitions and delegations, there's none. We have the acceptance of minutes and recommendations.
It's moved by Counselor Kylie, seconded by Counselor Morgan. The council accepts the minutes of the following meetings. The special meeting of council held March 15th, 2018. The regular meeting of council held March 20th, 2018. The special meeting of council held March 27th, 2018. And the meeting to open tax sale tenders held March 28th, 2018.
All in favor? It's Carrie, thank you. Item six is reports of municipal officers and communications. Eric is going to speak on the OCWA drinking water. I think Anthony's going to accompany you up there. Welcome. And this is the 2017 annual summary report.
Yeah, so if you recall a couple of weeks ago when I was, or a month ago when I was here to present, that was actually the, I was presenting the annual report, right? So there's not much to add from there. I made a couple of notes. When we talked about, I think I had presented the results of our ministry inspection. It was a draft when I spoke to you last month. It's now came out in full. We got 96%. We had one finding where there was a bit of an argument with taking handheld chlorine analyzer readings during equipment repairs or during equipment maintenance. And so we didn't decide to make it a big argument. It was just something we could improve and so we decided to take that route. And so on March 9th, we had completed all the training with all the ops and be satisfied. We got back to the ministry and said, we've now complied with everything you wanted and they're happy, everybody's happy. One suggestion they had in the report, if you recall, was that there's no written policy or bylaw preventing access to hydrants. Some communities have it, some don't. You know, so there was a suggestion in there that you could add it. You have a draft in place right now about backflow prevention. So just a suggestion, you can add it into there. I think it's just a matter of having, it's a matter of protecting yourselves, saying that there's a bylaw that doesn't allow unauthorized use of hydrants. Keep it simple and it's a good opportunity to protect yourselves. The wastewater treatment plant, the annual report is now out. We had a few partial bypasses. I'm not going to say that we had plant bypasses because we don't. We're able to take everything that Mother Nature can give us. But sometimes there's portions of the plant that we have to bypass. We'll bypass, sometimes we bypass the UV. We bypass the filter sometimes just to make sure that we can take everything that Mother Nature's giving us and put it through the plant. Now, having said that, we've taken measures. Anthony and his crew have done a lot of work to mitigate and to prevent even bypassing portions of the plant. And so we spoke with the Ministry of Environment and Climate Control about that, or climate change rather. And when we spoke to them, we said, here's how we want to run it. We want to run on one train, on one clarifier. Our plant has the ability during normal flows to run on one clarifier. It's actually a happier plant to run on one clarifier and it runs better. Our effluent quality was better. However, the ministry wanted us to amend our ECA, our environmental compliance approval. So we had to submit an application to amend our ECA to run it in that manner. That's now submitted to the ministry. We hope to hear back from them very soon. And then if we hear back from them soon enough, we'll be able to modify operations to take our spring flow and handle that a little differently. So we're looking forward to a positive response from the ministry quickly. So we'll see if it happens. That's about it for the two reports. You know, I'm happy to say that our chlorine dioxide trial for the removal of manganese and iron is working well, very well. The operators are getting it dialed in. You know, they're still playing with it. We're still adjusting. We're trying to, we want to lower the addition of this chemical as much as we can and still attain what we have to attain with the removal of manganese and iron. And it's working well. We've had, I just spoke with Don Partridge, we had three calls this year for dirty water. One was during a main break out in Swastika. So sometimes when you get some rushing water, you're going to get that. And then we had two calls for the, when we had the fire on the weekend. Water was starting to get rushed around a bit, so we had two other calls. This, I think, is good news. As we know, the pilot is due to be done at the end of June. We started it January 3rd. It's due, six months trial due to be done at the end of June. Now, since council, I think you take July off. Am I correct in saying that?
We have one meeting in July.
You have one meeting in July? Okay, so maybe I'll speak with your CAO or I'll speak afterwards. If we can get the report in, I think we have a lot of our answers. The only answer I don't have so far in this project is how it's going to behave with the ice off and how it's, and what are we going to do? What are we going to run it at with the ice off? I'm hoping to get enough answers, say by the first week of June, and then I can have a presentation ready for you for the third week of June. And then we can make a decision if we move forward. Okay? Because there are some benefits to running it in the summer as well. If we, you know, we know that we don't have the brownwater issues in the summer. We know that because of the manganese tends to sit down. But there's benefits to running dioxide during the summer as well. Sometimes can help with taste and odor control. And there's the odd, sometimes in August, we start to get a bit of a fishy taste and apparently this will alleviate that. So I'd be really interested to see if it does. Secondly, it can help with the reduction of trihalomethane production. And so I'd be interested to see if that helps as well. Okay? So hopefully we have all those answers for you for the third week of June for your council meeting. Anything else to add? Did I miss anything?
No, you did great.
Counselor Kylie?
Yeah, Eric and Anthony. There was one night, non-compliance notice issued in that inspection report and it says by November the April the 13th, 2018, the owner of the operating authority yourselves must provide a written standard operating procedure that describes step-by-step direct action to be taken by operators during responding to full or pre-ordering residential needs.
Yes, yes, Counselor Kylie, that was done on March 9th. We submitted the SOP to Janet Rakowski and she was happy with it and we're now following that SOP.
Not to be a nitpicker, but we send counsel a copy of that because we're personally liable for,
I won't counsel her, but Anthony certainly will.
Just one other question. This has been kind of a burning thorn in my side and I think I've talked to you a little bit. But the, in the inspection report, there was a kale gold mine booster pumping station, which the facility was intended to service kale gold and residents along the way to gold ore form. Although construction of this pumping station was completed in the summer of 2013, at this, at the time of the inspection, January the 9th, the facility has not been commissioned in service. Now, my understanding is we do have a couple hundred thousand dollars invested into a pumping station that is basically useless to us. Is that a fair comment?
That's a fair comment.
What can we do to recuperate any money from that pumping station that's sitting there idle? With the expansion at the mine, would it, could it still be used? I guess that's the question.
The idea, and I don't want to speak for the consulting engineer that was used at the time. The idea was that, I think for firefighting at the mine, they needed higher pressures, higher flows. This, the pumping station would certainly accommodate the higher pressures and higher flows. The only issue was when the flow modeling was done, it was done on assumptions that there were fresh lines and, you know, there was no tuberculation in the lines and whatnot. When we commissioned or tried to commission the pump station, we found that we couldn't pump what we didn't have. So we were pulling all the water out of the lines and cavitate the pump, of course, and it wouldn't work. I wouldn't, you know, and then since then, we did some modeling, I think with Stantec Engineering, that verified the fact that there's not enough water feeding it. I don't know, right now, counselor, to sell the parts or try to recuperate the parts, I don't need the parts at the water plant nor the wastewater plant. You know, typically when you give parts back, although they're brand new, sadly, it's about 25 cents on the dollar. I would, right now, it's, you know, kale gold is going to expand. You know, I would sit tight. It's new equipment, it runs well, everything is good there, everything is fresh there. Sit on it, wait and see what their needs are and see if we can accommodate it at that time. That would be my suggestion if I was the owner.
Okay, I do make it clear, it's nothing fault by Aqua.
Oh, no.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Counselor Mino?
We didn't score 100%, Eric.
Pardon me?
We did not get 100%.
No, we didn't get 100%. No, and, you know, I wanted to, we could have argued it a little wee bit, counselor, it wasn't worth it. It wasn't worth it, it's something, I mean, yes, it's something we could improve anyway, so.
It's an objective.
It's, yeah, we're going to improve on that area, so.
I had three little questions. On the hydrant policy, who generates that? You guys or our town staff?
Generates the hydrant policy? Your town staff would do that.
So are we going to give a direction to do that or that's noted? It's just noted?
It's noted. We'll figure out how to do it.
It's not a directive of the ministry, it's an opportunity for improvement.
But I understand rationale behind it, which is certainly worth pursuing.
You got it.
The other thing was, in the report about the federal school, the bacteria that we're talking about, what's the danger of this bacteria? What is it like?
Okay, so at federal school, that was, I think it was a background count, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so when we go to take a water sample at any given location, what we take, we test it for E. coli, Escherich coliforms. Then we test it for total coliforms and we also test it for background colonies. Okay? Now, if we get a hit on E. coli or total coliforms, okay, again, that's not an indicator that your water is unsafe. It's an indicator that there's possibly deadly pathogens in the water. When we do a background count, it's that, a background count is an indication that the water may have the propensity to harvest nasty bacteria. Okay? So it's not that it's there yet, it has the propensity to. So, and now again, that could have been a sample bottle, it could have been some hiccup at the lab, it could have been a sampling technique that was not followed properly. It could have been someone that wiped their nose on the faucet before we took a sample. There's a million different reasons. That's why immediately we re-sample and the re-sample came back clean as a whistle, so.
And what would be the remedy if there was?
If it didn't come back clean, then what we end up doing is, well, number one, we'd flush the line and then retest. Sometimes we'd have to investigate further, see if there's a source. But typically flushing the line and retesting does fine. That's why we sample at different locations throughout town. So we're trying to follow the trail of the water out to the ends, right?
So we're clean on that?
You got it.
Okay.
Clean as a whistle.
Okay, the other thing was on the, in the testing, the new testing is that haloacetic test.
Yeah.
What's that?
So when we talk about, when we add chlorine to the water in order to disinfect it, you get a byproduct of trihalomethanes. Trihalomethanes are suspected carcinogens. And so we're legislated to keep it under an average of 100 micrograms over four counts over the years, micrograms per liter, infinitesimal. Now, haloacetic acids are another byproduct that are formed along with THMs, with trihalomethanes, okay? So the ministry has added the testing of haloacetics to it. Okay? And we're well below the ministry parameters.
Counselor Morgan?
Eric, you mentioned earlier about the changing the, I guess, the operating permit for the wastewater treatment plant. And it falls back on something Counselor Kylie mentioned earlier is the fact that, you know, the responsibility stops at this table. When you apply for those types of changes to the ministry, I'm assuming that our staff are kept in the loop that those changes are being requested and that we have, so, because that plant is our plant at the end of the day, right?
It's your plant, it's your responsibility, yeah, absolutely.
Exactly, so who would be the person?
Yeah, your town engineer.
Our town engineer and?
And I think your CAO is aware of that application as well, eh?
And maybe I missed it, but would it be appropriate that council is made aware that that change is being requested? I'm just, again, because we have so much responsibility and so much exposure when it comes to, probably not so much wastewater, but maybe for drinking water for sure.
Of course, I mean, we, you know, Aqua's, we're 100% transparent. So if you wish, we can, these kind of changes, if you want us to share this information directly with council, we can. Or if we want to go through your staff to share with council, either way.
I would prefer if it comes through staff because henceforth, from this point, other changes as well. I'm not suggesting for a second that the loop be disconnected. I'm just, this is kind of the first that I've heard about this request and I think it's significant. And it's just that with us having so much responsibility, even if we're just made aware of it, then we can ask for the additional information. We don't need to necessarily get a voluminous report sitting on our, you know, in our inbox, I mean. No, I think that there's other areas too. When we're doing on construction projects, if there's any updates like that, from now on, we want to see that there's a short summary provided to council so you know what's going on across the field. And this is definitely part of that.
So that will go through your engineer, correct?
Yes.
No other questions? Well, thank you very much, Eric, and Anthony for the update. And we have a resolution, we're just going to read it.
It's moved by Counselor Morgan, seconded by Counselor Kylie. The council of the town of Kirkland Lake has been presented with the 2017 annual summary report to council for the Kirkland Lake Water Treatment Plant as per certificate of approval number 6235-68YQFF.
All in favor? It's accepted, thank you. Item seven is the introduction reading and consideration of bylaws.
It's moved by Counselor Kylie, seconded by Counselor Morgan. The bylaw 18-048, being a bylaw to authorize the execution of its agreement agreement with W. Haas for acting interim chief administrative officer, be read a first, second, and third time and acted and passed.
All in favor? Carrie, thank you.
The next bylaw, I would just like to just preamble it. This is appointing Ryan Dagum in as deputy clerk. This is not a new position. Ryan will not, there is no extra money that was going to him. This is not a new position. This is going back to the way it was probably about six months ago where he is just a backup for me if anything happens. You do have a deputy clerk who is able to step into the position. So this is a motion that's moved by Counselor Morgan and seconded by Counselor Kylie. The bylaw 18-049, being a bylaw to appoint Ryan Dagum in as deputy clerk, be read a first, second, and third time and acted and passed.
All in favor? Thank you.
It's moved by Counselor Kylie, seconded by Counselor Morgan. The bylaw 18-050, being a bylaw to decertify the Kirkland Lake Municipal Airport, be read a first, second, and third time and acted and passed.
All in favor? It's Carrie, thank you.
It's moved by Counselor Morgan, seconded by Counselor Kylie. The bylaw 18-051, being a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute a funding agreement with Fednor Industry Canada, be read a first, second, and third time and acted and passed. with Fednor Industry Canada, be read a first, second, and third time and acted and passed.
All in favor? It's Carrie, thank you.
This is moved by, sorry?
A notice of motion? Confirmation bylaw?
It's moved by Counselor Kylie, seconded by Counselor Morgan. The bylaw 18-053, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held April 3, 2018, be read a first, second, and third time and acted and passed.
All in favor? It's Carrie, thank you. Counselors' reports? Counselor Kylie?
Yeah, I'd just like to compliment the staff of Heritage North for the CJKL Awards Night. It was an excellent venue, well-attended, and staff really did a bang-up job, was first class. And congratulations to all the businesses and individuals who received their awards. Tony, you were in attendance, I think you'd agree, it was a special night.
Yep, it was, it was a great night, and certainly the recipients, they certainly want to take this opportunity as well to congratulate again the Citizen of the Year, Lorraine Kylie, as well as the CJKL Lifetime Achievement Award winner, Bill Enoy. And it was a great night, and it was enjoyed by many. I think it was the first time we've had the chamber dinner where there was, when there was no workday the next day. So people were there a little longer than they, they had been the past years, but it was a good night had by all. And I want to take a moment to, to thank the fire, all the crew at the fire department, the volunteers, the full-time, Rob, your crew down there. You know, it's unfortunate that we are faced with these fires sometime, but, you know, the response time and getting the equipment there was second to none, and we certainly want to congratulate everyone, and we hope that you can convey our thanks to the firefighters, both full-time and volunteer, for a job well done.
It's moved by Counselor Morgan, seconded by Counselor Kylie. The council adjourns its regular meeting of April 3, 2018, to an in-camera meeting to discuss one potential property sale.
All in favor? It's Carrie, thank you. This meeting is adjourned.